Thank you and welcome everyone. Uh, Mr. Dankert, could you take the role, please?
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Postma.
Present.
Ashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I'll take a motion adopting the agenda with the additions and a subtraction and an update. So I'll move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number two is a motion approving the minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. So I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number three, recognitions and awards. It's welcoming week next week. Uh, so as a proclamation, I'll read. Uh, sit back and enjoy the docile tones of this proclamation. Whereas next week, we celebrate welcoming week as a way of creating home together with communities around the world. Welcoming week is about bringing neighbors together across lines of differences to build relationships and work together on shared goals. And whereas Austin's success depends on making sure that all residents and community members feel welcome here. Today, new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses and contributing to the vibrant diversity and the quality of life that we all value for current and future generations. And whereas we must come together as a community with compassion and unity, with welcome and respect, and with a shared vision that all residents of the city of Austin are safe and that civil rights are protected. Austin is committed to racial and ethnic equality and the inclusion of our residents in creating the foundation of a vibrant community. And whereas the city of Austin encourages the business community, civic groups, other units of government, and community institutions to undertake initiatives beyond this proclamation to make the region a welcoming place for new and long-term residents alike. And whereas regardless of where we were born or what we look like, we're residents of Austin, uniting our efforts to bring or to build a stronger community. By recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And further, the city of Austin does hereby recognize today and during welcoming week twenty twenty-one, the value of ensuring that all are welcome here. We encourage all residents of Austin to reach out and to welcome all who live in and visit our community. I invite all residents of Austin to join this movement by taking action in the spirit of unity across differences. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. King, Mayor of Austin, do hereby proclaim September tenth through September nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, is welcoming week twenty twenty-one. And, uh, to speak further about welcoming week, Laura Helly is here from the Human Rights Commission. So, Ms. Helly, welcome.
Hi.
Hi there.
Laura Helly, ten oh nine Eighth Street Northwest. Um, as you said, I'm a member of the Human Rights Commission. And so, uh, I don't need to take a lot of time. I just want to say thank you, um, for reading that proclamation. Uh, and we're very proud of Austin. Austin is known as a leader in the nation in terms of our welcoming, um, culture and, uh, the things that we do. So on the website, folks can see all the different events, um, to go to. Uh, today, uh, Mauro County also, um, made this, uh, same proclamation. So our community is united in city and county, um, and how important it is to, to, uh, welcome everyone and to bridge across differences.
Awesome. Thank you for your commitment, Laura, and your drive and your passion for human rights. I appreciate what you do on the commission and everybody else that serves on that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And the dunk tank sound, it sounded fun, and now I don't know if it sounds too fun. There's gonna be a dunk tank on the kickoff of the welcoming week. So if anybody wants to participate, I think you can talk to Mary Ann Duran. She'll sign you up.
I heard you were first up.
I, I don't know what I am. Have some water left, please. Um, so moving on to the, uh, more recognition than award, Scott Lightman's here, VFW commander, to, to share some thoughts on our nine eleven twentieth anniversary. Mr. Lightman in Raleigh.
I can't hold a place up, I ain't got a match. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor.
Hi, Scott.
Um, we'll meet tonight as Ray Hanson, past commander of the Legion, VFW, and he's the Legion color guard commander also, so. Um, as veterans, me and Ray were talking, we wanted to make sure that the city of Austin was recognizing the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. Um, we felt as veterans, it was important that as a community, we stand up and recognize our police, fire, EMTs that provide the services that we need as a community. So we wanted to make sure that we did that as a community. Also, with the war ending, we wanted to recognize those men and women in service who gave their lives because of this event. So with that, we would, um, like to have a ceremony at the downtown memorial on nine eleven, starting at eight forty-six. We would contact all the churches to have them ring their bells. That's when the first plane hit the first tower. After that, we would have opening prayer. We would ask the mayor to address the public. And then Rowley would address as far as the veterans' aspect of it. We'd lower the flags and fire a salute to the, all those that have given their lives. So that's what we'd like to do. Um, I think it's the right thing to do. So, Rowley?
I concur.
A few words, Rowley, I like that. Well, I certainly appreciate, uh, the, the invitation to speak at that. I think it's super important. Can't believe it's been twenty years. I know all, all of us remember where we were at. If we're old enough, Obala might not remember. You're too young. But, uh, what an impact that it continues to make today and to have. I, I want to say, was it three hundred and forty-three, uh, uh, EMTs or P D and fire lost, lives lost, or is that what it was? Three hundred and forty-three, I believe. So yeah, tremendous, uh, respect we have for our law enforcement and fire to rush in and, and, uh, put service above self, no doubt. And that was quite an impactful moment in time and continued to be for months, it seemed like, on end with all the news, so. Thank you, gentlemen. I will be there, and I hope the rest of the public will be down there, too, in that memorial corner, wherever you call it, uh, Memorial Garden.
Memorial.
Right on Main Street and.
Right on Main Street.
Uh, right in the cor- corner of the courthouse.
Veterans Memorial.
Yep, Veterans Memorial. All right. Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda. So I'll move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Public hearing, uh, item number five is a public hearing on sidewalk improvement assessments for Eighth Street Northwest, Eighth Avenue Northwest to Thirteenth Avenue Northwest. The amount to be assessed is eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, forty-one cents, at three and a half percentage interest for fifteen years. Um, five A is a presentation of the project and associated assessments. Mr. Wang?
Earlier this spring, when we were completing all of our street and sidewalk assessment projects back in February and March, we missed one block approximately of Eighth Street Northwest for sidewalk assessments. Uh, we caught it this summer as we're going through the project. And we then identified a list of sidewalks and adjacent property owners that were, um, that needed sidewalk replacement. So to be consistent with all of the other streets and sidewalks that we replaced as part of our other program, we would, uh, recommend adding this group of properties and sidewalks to the overall assessment process. And as you noted, it totals eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents for eight or nine properties located on Eighth Street Northwest. Do you have any questions?
Counsel? And this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this matter? Sidewalks? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a, uh, resident, well, let's, let's see, presentation of the project, call for written objections. Has there been any written objections, Mr. Wang?
No, I have not received any written objections.
Yeah. Uh, five C is a motion to adjourn and continue the hearing on the properties for which written objection to the assessment have been filed, and there has been none. Uh, five D, looking for a resolution, uh, declaring the cost. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Five E is a resolution adopting the assessment role. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number six is a resolution receiving bids for the residential asbestos abatement. Holly?
Uh, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Thank you. Uh, we tested, we had six structures tested, uh, five homes and one garage. Uh, five of those structures require asbestos abatement, um, primarily things like duck wrap, uh, window glazing, siding, vinyl flooring and floor tile. Um, we had three bids. Uh, the lowest bid was twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And we would recommend awarding the low bid to a special, um, and then there's a cost breakdown, um, just if you're curious about that. Um, and if you have any questions, uh, let me know.
Questions for Holly, counsel? Hearing none. I'll entertain a resolution for six. So I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And number seven is a resolution receiving bids for airport snow removal. Stephen?
It's just about that time of year, unfortunately. So periodically, we will solicit quotes for snow removal at the Austin Municipal Airport. Our airport runway is fifty hundred, fifty-eight hundred feet in length, so just over a mile. So we have a, a mile of runway. We have a mile of taxiway. Then we have, uh, multiple interconnecting taxiways and then also the airport apron. So we put that out for bids for snow removal. And we've had the same contractor doing the work for about the last six years, and they have decided to step away. So as we solicited bids, there was a group of, uh, eligible contractors that we felt would be capable of doing the work that we requested bids from. And we received a bid from Kayler's Yard Service in the amount of, uh, a hundred and forty dollars for, per hour, whether they use a mortar grater or a front-end loader. Usually it takes both pieces of equipment when doing the snow removal process. That rate is the same rate that we had for the previous contractor that was doing the snow removal. Each year, we estimate there will be, every year varies, but on average, it's about a hundred and fifty hours per year of snow removal time at the airport. Last year was actually our lowest year in, 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 in the last ten, being about eighty hours. And two thousand eighteen was our highest number of hours. So, uh, two winters that were only a couple of years apart, we go from our highest number of hours of snow removal to our lowest. So it can, it can fluctuate, but we usually spend about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per year on snow removal. These funds for snow removal come from our airport maintenance fund. We're able to recoup some funds from MnDOT to pay for this. And then also from our local tax levy goes toward, uh, paying for airport snow removal. Uh, with that, we would recommend, uh, awarding this bid to Kayler Yard Service to complete the snow removal work. And I believe Mel Kayler may be in the audience there if, uh, if you would like to have any questions for him regarding, um, his equipment, his ability to add this to his workload or anything like that.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Kayler or Mr. Wang?
Stephen, a quick one is, do you know why we only got one bid? Is there something about this project that unique that other folks weren't interested in?
You know, snow removal is, is a little bit different. A lot of the yard service companies are set up for smaller snow removal jobs. So, uh, we reached out to Mel and his group after recognizing, uh, some of the larger, uh, contracts that he has with folks out around the Eighteenth Avenue area. Um, that kind of showed to us that he's got the equipment necessary to do a job like this. We also reached out to contractors that we work with in the summertime that typically have this type of work. But in this case, you know, they're, they're more set up for summertime construction. And it's likely their employees are not available for winter snow removal projects. So that would be why those others, I would estimate that we reached out to, uh, were not interested in bidding on a project like this.
Hey, Stephen, question for you. You know, obviously, we have city staff that remove snow. Um, this feels like kind of a hybrid approach where we've got city staff doing some work, and then we've got a private contractor coming in to supplement. Can you talk about the decision to go that direction versus, say, just having city staff do all of it?
Yeah, the, the workload that's required for our street crews to remove snow during a snow event really occupies all of our city staff. Uh, we also, as many of you know, we utilize sewer department folks, and we'll also pull from wastewater treatment plant, park and rec to make sure that our roadways are clear for the traveling public. So that's really our primary focus. So we just don't have enough manpower or equipment to do the airport runway at the same time. So that is why, uh, I believe the whole, the entire twenty years that I've been here, we have contracted out snow removal at the airport. This will be our third contractor that will be, uh, doing work. So we've had a good longevity generally for airports, nor removal contractors. And we look forward to having a, a long-term, uh, working relationship with, uh, Mel and his group as well.
Makes total sense. Thanks, Stephen. I like it.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a resolution for item number seven. So I'll move.
I second.
Tom?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eight is adopting a revised assessment role for First Avenue Northeast and Sixteenth Avenue Northeast. Uh, Mr. Wang?
Well, this is opposite of the Eighth Street item where we identified, uh, a great deal of sidewalk on First Avenue Northeast. And our, we, our surveyors went out about a year and a half ago and surveyed up the bad sidewalk. And we want them to be, um, to look, to be picky. We want them to look for imperfections. And we have a unique situation on First Avenue Northeast where, uh, the large majority of the sidewalk is, looks like it's an exposed aggregate sidewalk. Um, that's unique in a residential area. We, we see that sometimes. That's decorative sidewalk, maybe in the downtown area. We did it recently here on our bump outs by City Hall on Fourth Avenue between us and the rec center. So it's, it's a little, um, upgrade, I would say, and they weren't expecting to see that for residential sidewalks. So they marked it all as bad sidewalk. Mitch, our assistant engineer, started getting some calls this summer about it, getting called out, looking at it. We decided we should reevaluate it. So we have eliminated a great deal of sidewalk, uh, from the project and costs as well from adjacent property owners. As proposed, our sidewalk assessments on this project reduced from eighty-two thousand dollars down to thirty-two thousand dollars. So we were able to cut out fifty thousand dollars of costs for adjacent property owners. And therefore, we think that's the right thing to do and modify their assessments accordingly. So that is why this is in front of you tonight.
Thanks for the explanation, counsel. Anything further? Otherwise, looking for a resolution for eight A, rescinding resolution sixteen to forty. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And then item number eight B is, uh, adopting a revised assessment role that Stephen spoke about. Looking for a resolution for that. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution pass, passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is a resolution setting public hearing for fall assessments on October fourth, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number ten, uh, is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin, and those donations are as follows. Cherry Fox from TJ Properties donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the Bike Club, five hundred dollars from Liesel Schindler to the Bike Club, and five hundred dollars from Nor Costco Incorporated to the Bike Club. With that, I'll, uh, take a resolution for item number ten. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number eleven, uh, is a motion reviewing an ordinance regarding parking or storing of motor vehicles. Aye.
Um, we are adding language requiring registration of vehicles located in allowed front yard parking areas and clarifying the definition of recreation vehicles as a subset of vehicles. Um, our, we've, we've always required registration of vehicles located in front yards. Um, but it doesn't say it clearly like it does for side and rear yards. Um, it's more inferred from looking at the, the ordinance as a whole. When we send out violation letters, of course, we want to have, you know, a provision to put into the letter versus the whole ordinance or try to explain that. Um, we also, um, wanted to make clear that the, uh, recreational vehicles are treated a little bit differently than just your ordinary motor vehicle um, in residential areas as well. Um, the language in the original memorandum, um, that you received was changed a little bit. Um, there was a amended ordinance, um, proposal that should have been included later. I didn't actually see it, uh, in your materials for sure, but, uh, maybe I could ask, uh, Ann if that was.
Yeah, there's a hard copy of that. Yep, well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. Appreciate it. Um, do the councilmembers, do you have any questions?
I would also, uh, define substr- or, uh, the driveway or adjacent, uh, parking pad next to a driveway as having, I think you clarified it has to have a, like a solid surface.
Hard surface.
Hard surface.
Yep. Yes, that's correct. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Yes, yes, definitely.
As a casual observer, I think there's been a, a run of people parking on their lawn, so I'm glad to kind of reinforce that and have some definition to it.
Now, it, now the next step is would be enforcement. Are we, is this dependent on a, on a report, like a neighbor reporting it? Or is it, can our law enforcement actively or at least somewhat actively doing, doing citations for violations?
Um, anyone can make a report. Um, and if we see something, you know, obviously, when we're out, uh, doing inspections, we'll make a note of it and, uh, send a violation letter. But otherwise, uh, we do rely on, uh, complaints primarily.
Holly, I, I would kind of echo the mayor's thoughts. I think that there's lots of folks out there who may be unintentionally violating the old ordinance and will definitely be violating the new ones. I think we may need some sort of education campaign, whether that's something in the paper. I, I think folks might need a little bit of time. As somebody who owns a recreation vehicle, I keep mine stored somewhere. Um, and I think a lot of folks are gonna have to do that, but I think it might be a struggle if all of a sudden a hundred RVs and campers in town need to find a place to stay other than the front yard. It might be difficult. So I would love to see a little education piece. And then some enforcement beyond just waiting for neighbors, neighbors to, to speak up, if you will.
So if you drive by the Postma residence right now, you'd be fully in compliance?
Uh, at the moment, yes.
Yeah, no, we, you know, there are, education is always an important aspect of all of our ordinances and our, our code. I mean, when I first started working for the city, I, I was not aware of all of the items that I probably, you know, had a couple of violations myself. So, yeah, it's important.
Shame on you.
Important to, uh, I know, I know. Well, it takes some time to, uh, there's a lot out there and, you know, definitely, if people have questions or they're not sure, they can always just call us.
Thank you, Holly. Chief McKeegan?
Well, we certainly partner with, uh, Holly's division on this. For this particular, uh, part of ordinance, the procedure on violations is that any violation is declared to be a nuisance, and upon ten days' written notice to the owner is given. And that would, that would flow through Holly's department. It would not be a, a citable offense, uh, from our agency that we would handle.
Okay, thank you.
Not calling out the cert team.
Not calling out the cert team. Uh, yeah, of course, remind they will. Uh, so, uh, look for a motion for eleven A for preparation of the ordinance. So I'll move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then also calling for ordinance for eleven B, adoption and publication of the ordinance. So I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All voice vote. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Moving on to item number twelve, reviewing an ordinance for liquor licensing updates. Ann?
Yes, these are the updates that we discussed at the last work session to bring our city code in more compliance with the state regulations. Um, so if anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer them. Otherwise, I would request adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Anybody questions for Ann or comments? Uh, motion for number twelve A, please?
I move that we pass the ordinance with a special thanks to Ann for preparing it for us.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve B is an ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Postma.
Aye.
Ashusta.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number thirteen is a resolution approving the property exchange with James Snee and authorizing the execution of the deed for exchange. Stephen Wang?
Yes, if I could please direct you to page two of the memo, which is a map showing the existing and proposed lot layouts there for five oh three Twenty-fourth Street Southwest. Uh, back in nineteen sixty-five, just a few years ago, sanitary sewer was extended out along Fifth Avenue Southwest. Uh, is actually extended all the way out to the, the trailer park on the west side of the interstate. And through that process, Outlot Eight was, was bisected. And it, it left a remnant parcel to the south of point one seven acres. And as the property has looked to make improvements over the years, it has been very limited with what can be done with that southerly section of property because it doesn't meet very many of our zoning code requirements. So we're looking at options of how we can correct this or make it more, uh, make it better for the property owner to be able to utilize their entire parcel. First item we looked at was how can we make Outlot Eight back to what it was originally? We came up with an idea of reestablishing the boundaries of Outlot Eight and just having an easement for our sanitary sewer instead of dedicated city property. That would then allow homeowner to be able to use the entire lot, less the easement for the sanitary sewer. And then taking that one step further, we looked at what is called Outlot Eleven, located directly to the east of the property, which currently is used for, again, a sanitary sewer main and also a drainage way. Talked to the property owner about their interest in acquiring additional space or, or lot space there as well. Uh, less what would be, uh, an easement that we would retain over that area. And we came up with the bottom portion of the picture, the proposed, where the lot would be increased to one point eight five acres. And then the city would retain an easement over the sanitary sewer and drainage area. It would allow them to utilize their property better for additions or yard space, whatever it may be. It would allow them to, uh, more easily comply with our zoning requirements. It would allow them to utilize their property better for additions or yard space, whatever it may be. It would allow them to, uh, more easily comply with our zoning requirements. It would, uh, put some property back on the tax base, very long-term plan for, uh, gaining revenue through our tax base. And the property owner would actually be gaining some usable property. So if you go back to the memo, it details, uh, how this would work in that the property owner would gain some property outside of our su- sanitary sewer easement, which was, which used to be Fifth Avenue. They would gain about four thousand, a little over four thousand square feet there. Outlot Eleven, uh, outside of our easement, they would gain almost fifty-seven hundred square feet. And we looked at the current tax value of that property and other properties around it. The current, uh, county tax value for their land is one dollar sixty, sixty-two cents per square foot. We multiplied that by the square footage of property they would be gaining. Again, not including the easements that we're retaining. And we came up with, uh, fifteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-six cents for a payment of what dollars would be due at this time. We looked at, uh, you with, uh, city attorney's office reviewing all of this as well. Looked at, uh, costs for recording and, and deed tax and then, uh, the easement cost, which, which we would actually pay back to the property owner of one dollar. Comes up with a, a total amount that the homeowner would pay the city of fifteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-one cents. So in the additional attachments for you is a, a, a deed where we would deed the property to the property owner for that sum of money in payment in return. And then we would also gain from them easement for the sanitary sewer and drainage way. So we would recommend, uh, moving forward with these agreements. And all of them have been reviewed, drawn up, uh, by our city attorney's office. They've also been reviewed by the property owner and they are in agreement with this as well. So with that, uh, open it up to any questions that you may have.
Counsel, questions?
I'm assuming that the Snee had the benefit since her driveway was a city street that the plows plowed his driveway for him and now he's got to do his own traveling?
No, we did not plow his driveway for him previously, so he's been taking care of that. They have.
All right. Entertain a resolution for item number thirteen, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item fourteen is a resolution approving the renewal of a limited use permit for the I ninety pedestrian bridge as part of Todd Park Trail. Stephen?
Uh, the next three items are all limited use permits with MINDOT. We, we passed one of these month and a half or so ago. And anytime that we have city-owned facilities in the MINDOT right-of-way, whether that be I ninety, Highway two eighteen, or Highway one oh five, we have to have an agreement with MINDOT to have our infrastructure within their right-of-way. It's very similar to our right-of-way ordinance that we worked on last fall, but it's, it's a lot more aggressive. They have a lot more requirements of us. And one of those requirements is to maintain a ten-year limited use permit. It expires every ten years and this is a process for renewal of that permit. This item, as you mentioned, is for the pedestrian bridge that's located right behind, behind the county highway department. This pedestrian bridge goes over I ninety and connects out to Todd Park. The item number fifteen is, uh, the Nature Center Trail. We have some tra- portions of trail at twenty-first street and also twenty-eighth street that run into the I ninety right-of-way. And item number sixteen is, it's actually the culvert, box culvert that goes underneath I ninety on the east side of Sixth Street. We have two culverts that go under I ninety. For some reason, they've only sent me one of them at this time, but this would be for the box culvert that goes underneath I ninety. So, um, quick description of those three items. If you have any questions as we move forward, let me know.
All right, we'll take item number fourteen, resolution first.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thanks, Tom. And number fifteen is resolution for the Nature Center Pedestrian Trail?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Sixteen is the I ninety pedestrian underpass east of Sixth Street Northeast. Resolution, please.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number seventeen is a motion authorizing the yard waste program for twenty twenty-one, uh, scheduled for September eighteenth to November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Stephen?
Yes, we have about a two-month timeframe on our leaf collection site. And we're anticipating leaves will start to fall soon with the dry conditions that we had this summer, if they haven't started already. And then we like to keep it open. We get requests to keep it open through Thanksgiving because there are a lot of family members that will come home and help their, their parents or grandparents, um, clean up around Thanksgiving time. So we have a little bit over a two-month window where we collect, uh, leaves, grass copings, and yard waste from the community. We do not accept branches. And we also request that property owners, if they bring their leaves or their yard waste out in plastic bags, that they dump those bags out and then we have garbage containers for the plastic bags. This cost for operating the leaf collection site, some of those funds for that come out of our waste transfer station. We also work with the county on advertising. They assist us with advertising for this program. So again, we accept leaves at the site seven days a week from dawn until dusk. That is all.
Thank you. Any questions?
Stephen, any discussion around kind of what we do with the waste afterwards? I know Hillier was interested in maybe buying some of it last year. Anything ever come of that or is that something we're looking at?
You know, we actually use it all generally on a yearly basis. Um, we provide a lot of free compost to city residents to pick up at the skate park right on the south side of Hormel. And we ha- this year, we are separating the material. We, the, our leaf suckers, we call them, that drive through the neighborhoods and pick up fallen leaves in the gutters. A lot of times those will collect plastic and garbage in them. So we're separating those piles from the city, uh, resident piles in hopes to get cleaner material that we can, again, give to residents as they request it in the spring and make it available to them. We also use some ourselves through our street department. We mix it in with black dirt and we make a, a really nice organic material that we use for touch-up work and any city projects where we are seeding down or reseeding areas. So generally, we use it all ourselves.
Is it worth, I mean, obviously there's a cost for us to do that. If we've got a party who's willing to help offset some of that cost, is it worth any additional discussion on that? I mean, yeah, we're using it, but we're receiving zero dollars for the stuff that we're not using internally.
I'm sorry, is that a question for me or the rest of the council?
I don't know who wants to answer it, guys. I was talking to my kids there, just zero response. All right, I know it's a dumb idea, never mind.
I, I see what, I'm looking, I see what you're looking. You're looking up at the screen at me on the screen. I'm sorry, I didn't realize. I thought you were looking at the rest of the council. You know, yes, we do have some cost in it. Uh, we have equipment out there that we roll the piles, uh, to try to get that to break down into compost. As, as I mentioned, we give it away for free to residents. We, we accept it for free and we give it back to them for free. So we do have our time associated with rolling the, the compost piles. Um, again, that's the program that's been set up. We've been successful in, in getting rid of it when we give it away for free and, and use it for our own projects. Uh, I, I would, I would put that back to the council to see if there is a desire to do, go a different route with it and, and, and go from there. I'd just take some direction on that.
Yeah, I, I think it's a valuable, uh, you know, kind of a, a program for the citizens to first of all, have someplace to put their yard waste, but also to gain from their own yard waste and take some compost out of what they've given. Certainly, Mr. Hillier gets, gets his. I mean, he has a long line out there too, people paying for his drop-off or compost. And, uh, and on a tornado event, I think years ago, we had some wind damage and, and we opened up the fairgrounds for the kind of collection of yard waste, trees, limbs, those kind of things. And that, it, I did get a call from Mr. Hillier as we were taking money away from him. But I think on some occasion, uh, my response to him at the time was, you know, you, you gotta, you gotta give a little bit to your, to your residents when they, it, were impacted by a storm and, and not have them line up to pay. So I think this is just one of those programs for a certain window of time that is great for the community. And, and again, Mr. Hillier has a business that he runs and, and he's, gets a good lion's share of that throughout the year anyway. So I just think we maintain as we've gone on this program.
I guess, yeah, I understand where Mr. Hillier's coming from, but like Stephen mentioned, we don't charge the people to, to bring them out. Uh, so to charge them for the compost that's provided when it's kind of just excess of what we use. I mean, if we had a great deal of excess, you know, maybe provide it to Mr. Hillier. But, um, I guess I don't see a, and, and I've noticed in my yard, I have almost as much in the spring as I do in the fall and I end up taking it to his place because we're not open, so.
I'm really asking the question of, I mean, we say free, but we're utilizing city tax dollars. There's a cost for us to do that. So in theory, could we provide a benefit to residents of recouping some of those cost dollars?
Well, I think we use the product, like Stephen said, until, I guess if we were to charge the people for the compost, how do we monitor that? Then you're going to talk even more dollars because you're going to have to have somebody down at the.
No, that's, I think we're getting, we're getting apples and oranges here, Jeff. The question is, right now, we, we, costs us something. We then give it, give it away for free, so we recoup zero dollars that we don't use. My question was, and I'm fine with if we continue doing that, but I'd just be kind of curious, like how many tax dollars could we recoup if we had a willing party willing to buy it from us?
Instead of giving it away, you'd sell it to Mr. Hillier, is what you're saying? And what you're, so what you're saying is instead of giving it away to the general public, we'd sell it to Mr. Hillier or an interested party?
Whoever wanted, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's, like the mayor said and Jeff pointed out, it's been working well the way it's, it's been going. There is a little bit of cost to it, but I don't think enough cost to, to try and change how it's been working.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any input on this discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion for item number seventeen. So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen is a motion authorizing participation with Impact Austin for a phase one discovery tour with Velocity Group and authorizing five thousand dollars in funding from the twenty twenty-one contingency. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Natasha Walz, my co-chair for Impact Austin. I brought to my attention, uh, Daniel Heinz, who's with Velocity Group. They've coordinated events, uh, in several places, but, uh, specifically in Bentonville, Arkansas. Uh, really talked about some transformative, uh, steps that they took to, uh, create a better sense of place and impact quality of life in that community. Um, that sounds pretty exciting to us in Austin, especially through the work that we're doing on Impact Austin. But, um, I put in the packet kind of an outline of what he would, uh, propose doing in Austin, but basically bring together community leaders to, uh, address some of our challenges that we have, uh, for retention of talent. Um, trying to better decide on place-making alternatives for community priorities. Um, aligning those, uh, funding priorities towards those goals and understanding, um, kind of where the community's at on, on, uh, bettering our community. Um, they also talked about, uh, what he calls a DNA of place workshop, which brings together individuals on how to create a fame, framework for future impact. Uh, Natasha Walz is here this evening. So is Mary Ann Duran, uh, from Impact Austin. And I certainly invite them to add additional comment. The, uh, cost would be split. Hormel Foods is agreed to pick up half of the cost. Uh, City Austin would be responsible for the other half. Um, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Natasha.
Here I am. Natasha, welcome.
Talk a little bit about, yeah, go ahead. Um, yeah, so we were able to meet, uh, directly, uh, over Zoom with Daniel Heinz, the CEO of the Velocity Group, um, and gain some information about exactly what this project would entail. Um, so it's a three-phased, uh, approach of the work that we would do with the Velocity Group. Uh, phase one was the discovery tour that Craig talked about, where we would, uh, gather with stakeholders from the community. Um, Natasha has already spoken with, uh, Mr. Snee at Hormel Foods and Mr. Ettinger at the Hormel Foundation, who are both on board, um, with this project moving forward. And we've also spoken with, uh, Joey Page, the new superintendent at Austin Public Schools, and he is, uh, invested into this work as well. Um, so this really, um, is looking at how do we define, um, our sense of place as a community and capitalize on that to grow the community of Austin. Um, so it's not a cookie cutter approach. Um, so having this, this broad stakeholder, uh, input involved in this phase one for the project uh, will be really critical for us to understand, um, all of our town's, uh, dynamics. After that phase one, he comes back with a phase two, which they call the Place Accelerator Program. And that, uh, uh, they, they bring back to us projects that are, uh, short-term, midterm, and long-term that we can be doing to better our community, um, with the end result being this kind of like ten-year, uh, vision for the community of Austin. But then mapping that back to what the first three years are going to be looking like for us. Um, and then there are stage gates during those first three years that we use to assess and pivot as needed, um, for the community. And then in the phase three, um, really is this unified development code and, um, honestly building on a lot of what we already have with like the downtown master plan and, um, the, uh, comprehensive city plan for the city of Austin. Um, and the work in this phase really depends on the selections that the stakeholder group makes in phase two for this project and what, um, projects that, uh, the group of stakeholders, uh, invested in this, uh, work with the Velocity Group decides to move forward, uh, on with that project. So I'll let Natasha share a little bit about, um, her conversations with, uh, both Mr. Snee and Mr. Ettinger. Yeah, so in talking with both, uh, Mr. Snee and Mr. Ettinger, they, um, both were on board. They were excited about the opportunity and I think they liked the flexibility that it had provided. It's not necessarily that you have to use Velocity Group going forward. It's more about how do you take the information that they've got and then we can decide what we could prioritize internally ourselves and then what maybe Impact Austin would be able to do, maybe what the foundation would be able to do. So that was the thing that I think they liked the most about it, was really truly the flexibility. And as Craig said, they have done this in Bentonville, Arkansas, but also have done it in forty-six different cities across the United States. So everything from small towns like Austin to bigger cities. And so that would be probably the big expectation of being able to be very flexible across the, um, country and then be able to take maybe some of those best practices and then figure out what works for Austin and the uniqueness of our community. Are there any questions?
And Natasha, you, you spoke about your time in Bentonville. I think it'd be important for the council to see what you saw twenty years ago to where it is now. Uh, not that we're Bentonville, but we want to attend to, but I think it's important for them to hear what you noticed.
Yeah, I mean, from my own personal experience, I lived in Bentonville, um, right at seventeen years ago. And if you would have closed your eyes, you would have thought it was Austin. It had very similar amenities that were there. The population was very, very similar. Um, the only thing that was else was that it was a dry county, so we've got that going for us at this point. But, um, what they've been able to do with that area and have a lot of the same type of dynamics that we have, other than maybe the population that's moving there, that's probably one additional thing that Bentonville has that Austin doesn't necessarily have today. Um, but what he was able to do to be able to work with the city and be able to just slowly grow it to where you started in the downtown area, they really focused it around the arts and then was able to start to be able to grow that to where now it's a place that I know at least Hormel Foods has a really difficult time being able to get people to leave there because they absolutely love the community. They're so invested in the community because of all the things that are there for them and their families.
Thank you. He's extremely dynamic, this Daniel Heinz. If you're in a bad mood or think the world's not going in the right direction, just talk to that guy for a little bit.
We'll fix it.
He's absolutely amazing. So I think it's a great investment and I'm happy to partner with Hormel Foods on this and see the school can gain from it too. So I think it's just a great win. So, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'd just echo, I mean, what, what everybody said. I think it's a great. I just echo, I mean, what, what everybody said. I think it's a great opportunity, and I've been going down to Bentonville for fifteen years, and, yeah, dramatic transformation between, you know, where it was and where it's at. And, you know, I had no idea, you know, that the old chicken plant was a chicken plant until I saw this presentation. Been there a number of times. And so, I mean, I think, you know, for where we're at, it makes a ton of sense for us to take somebody with some outside expertise who's done stuff like this all over the country. Let's get some fresh ideas, um, to broaden on the already awesome work that's going on in Austin. So I'd, thanks for bringing this forward, and I think it's an outstanding goal.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I'll take a motion for item number eighteen, then. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion eighteen carries. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item number nineteen's resolution approving a request for proposals for a DED Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. Craig?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members, uh, this is actually a federal EDA, uh, grant request. Uh, right now, with the Creekside Business Park, one of our challenges that we have, um, when we're recruiting new businesses, is to be able to overcome the infrastructure costs that we're looking at, as with many other items that the city, uh, finds as a priority. Um, trying to look for outside grant opportunities is something that we look at, working with John Garry. Uh, we've been able to work with Darren Fliner, that is the representative that covers Minnesota, about, uh, possibility of going after some federal funds. Uh, right now, the program with, uh, stimulus dollars, basically, COVID dollars, has increased the traditional grant program that's a fifty-fifty match to an eighty-twenty match. So we're trying to move, uh, quickly to accommodate that, uh, to try to be able to get in, uh, on that availability. Uh, the cost for city infrastructure is two-point-three million. If you add Austin Utilities portions of that, that takes us to three-point-seven million, uh, for a project cost on an eighty-twenty basis. That would be just shy of three million dollars and seven-hundred-and-forty-six thousand for the city. Um, Austin Utilities has some loop distribution costs associated with their number. I propose that those matched dollars come from Austin Utilities, and we would fund, uh, the other part of the infrastructure, both for ours and Austin Utilities for the local distribution. Estimated cost is we'd send this out to prospective engineering firms is around ten-thousand dollars proposed, splitting that cost with Austin Utilities. Uh, John Garry is here this evening to comment on the proposal, as well as Mr. Nadauer, um, so I invite them to come forward and add comment to the proposal.
Very good. Gentlemen, welcome.
Hi, Mark. Hey, Mayor, council and staff. Um, first of all, thanks for including us in this, uh, opportunity, and, uh, we put some numbers together quickly. As Craig said, this is on the fast, fast track. Um, actually, I haven't had a chance to really review with my, my, uh, board. We'll be doing that next Tuesday in my board meeting, but, um, I believe, uh, if this process continues, we would be supportive of this effort to gain some money from, uh, from this grant as well as, uh, participating, uh, ourselves. This infrastructure, there's a loop as well as, uh, filling in the, uh, the addition of the street development in this subdivision. And so all this would help us serve and, and feed, uh, adequately this, this area. So I'll stop there. If there's questions, I can answer those. John, have you got anything to add?
Hey, John. Councilmembers, uh, Mr. Clark, thanks. I think it's, um, it's an opportunity. There's no guarantee we'll get the, uh, the prize of the eighty-twenty grant, but it's really an opportunity we're encouraged to consider by our representative. And, uh, I think from economic development perspective, it's a good deal, and it's, it helps with readiness as, as we move ahead developing those lots. That's all. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks. Council, questions? If not, uh, entertain a motion or a resolution for item number nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, John and Mark. Uh, twenty's been removed and on to resolution for twenty-one, approving a property split for Argus Nelson. Holly?
Yeah, it should be pretty peaceful right now. The dogs are doing outdoor wrestling now instead of indoor. Um, and, uh, I, my process for doing these splits is to send a preliminary review out to, uh, engineering at the city at level and then Austin Utilities, um, to get, uh, feedback from them, uh, if there are any concerns about the split in this instance, uh, the Argus Nelson property. Uh, it's initially, or it is currently, uh, one parcel with two homes. Um, and, uh, the petitioner wishes to divide the parcel into two, um, with one home on each, um, and is my understanding he wants to, to sell one of the parcels. Um, the, both parcels do meet our minimum requirements for residential lot, um, and there were no concerns, um, from engineering or Austin Utilities, uh, regarding this split.
Thank you. Holly, council? Anything? Uh, then I'll entertain a resolution for item number twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Similar resolution for number twen- uh, item number twenty-two is approving a property split for Craig Kessner. Holly?
Yes, in this instance, um, the Kessners own two properties or are legal representatives of one property and own the other. Um, they are dividing their home property into two parcels, um, one portion to be sold, that's the parcel outlined in yellow, and then the pink portion will be, uh, combined with their parents' properties to the south. Um, this was also sent to Austin Utilities and Engineering for review. We ordinarily wouldn't allow a division or split that didn't have its own access, but in this instance, the one, the pink portion will be combined with a parcel that does have access. Um, there are no concerns other than, um, that, uh, the access question.
Okay. Thanks, Holly.
Do you have any questions?
Council, anything for Holly? Uh, look for a resolution for item number twenty-two.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Busy night. Turn to page three, for those keeping count of our agenda. Uh, on page three, resolution for number twenty-three is declaring the property at nine-oh-four, Thirteenth Avenue Northeast, a hazardous structure. Need a resolution. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Item number twenty-four is a motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to con- contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at six-oh-five, Twelfth Street Northeast, the Ubaldo property. In motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. On the additions of the agenda, item number twenty-five is a resolution approving a settlement agreement with Incorporated. So moved.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number twenty-six is a resolution approving the purchase agreement with Mayo Clinic Health Systems. Uh, council, any more information, or Mr. Lang, have any further comments on this? I'll look for resol- resolution number twenty-six.
Just one clarification question. Do we have a purchase agreement at one sixty or one fifty or whatever that we're buying at four?
Yes.
Okay.
One fifty.
One fifty?
One fifty, okay.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a resolution for item number twenty-six. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Fashista.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.